Good evening, everyone. I hope you can all hear me okay. I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting over the Fairview District 72 Board of Education, November 17th, 2021. We have already established that we have a quorum this evening. I would just like to remind everyone, and I will double check myself, that your cell phones are silenced. And if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. So our first item of business this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular and close session meetings of October 20th, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second to approve?
Sure.
Our second, are there any comments or edits to the minutes?
No.
Nope. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. So next item is to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $232,904. Sorry, $232,904.25. Can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding the bills? We're all good. Okay, in that case, would the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Guliana?
Yes.
Ms. Lanoi?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Boosdy?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Next item is PTA report. Do we have a report this evening? Excellent.
October 29th, we had our fall parties at school for the kindergarten to fourth graders, which was a fun event for all the students. On October 30th, we had the first PTA trunk or treat, which we would find the volunteers and all the families who participated. It was a grand success, and we got really good responses from the parents and the students. And we look forward to make it like an annual event. November 4th was a third PTA benefit night at Willigan in downtown Skokie. November 10th, we had our PTA general meeting on Zoom. And the upcoming event is December 9th, PTA Benefit Night at Portillo's in Skokie. That's all we have.
I think it's amazing that you're managing to pull these events together, even in the circumstances that we're in. It's really great. I know the kids are loving it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's possible only with the support of the school and the parents.
And thank you for the spirit wear, the PTA spirit wear. I've loved some of the new items. So I think that's really exciting for everyone when there are some new items to choose from. So I know that the deadline is tonight. So if there's anyone who has an order, this is your chance to support the PTA. But I love the sherpa jacket, the fluffy ones. So thank you for your efforts on that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so school activity report is next. Does the board and administration have good news to share from the district? Anyone?
Just a couple items from the school side of things. We had a great fall season in athletics, which I know last month got talked about. And we continued with our basketball season as well, which is great. And then we also are gearing up for concerts again. So our music department and administration came together to think about ways to do it safely and to get our students to be able to perform. So we are doing that ticket only for students that are a part of those ensembles will be able to give their family members a couple of tickets to come see live performances in the evening. So those are happening kind of from now until our next board meeting. So that's really exciting. So thanks to the effort of the music department and for Cindy and the board for allowing us to do that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else got anything to share? Okay.
Sorry, Marianne and I were just racking our memory for dates. I will share. Thank you to the Fairview teaching staff, as well as all of our members of our Fairview staff for helping us become a top workplace for the third consecutive year in a row. We are really thrilled to have high participation in the survey that all staff members took and based on their ratings of their experience working here at Fairview. The district was, once again, at the top of the pack. So I'm very proud of that and certainly something that warrants good news from our point of view. So thank you to everyone. We are privileged to work with so many wonderful professionals here at Fairview. So, good job.
Yep, congratulations. Okidok, so we're flying through this evening, which is great because we've got a lot to get through. And the first of those of our administrative reports is an equity audit report from Dr. Dubiel.
Yes, so Dr. Dubiel and I are going to co-present this report. So just because of the way the technology is set up, I think I am going to move over to the podium, if that's okay with everyone. This is Dr. Dubiel. The last time I think the board had an opportunity to meet Dr. Dubiel was remotely, she was up on the big screen. So we're very pleased to have her here in person with us this evening. And we are going to run through a brief presentation that we collaborated on. And then we'll get to any questions or comments from the board, if that makes sense. So to begin with, I'd just like to start out by reminding all of us who are present here tonight, the District 72 Mission Statement, creating a strong foundation for academic excellence and personal growth by setting high expectations, teaching to the needs of learners, and embracing the richness of our cultural diversity. This mission statement has been a part of the Fairview culture for many, many years. And I really am proud about the way in which we came to the mission statement because it was a collaboration of all of the community stakeholders, students, parents, teachers, staff, et cetera. And it's one that we continue to feel really rings true for what we're doing here in the district each and every day. Prior to the 2019-2023 Strategic Plan, I wanted to touch upon some of the work that we had begun. We were a founding member of the Skokie EL Parent Center in 2008. The EL Parent Center is responsible for the parent mentor program that Fairview has taken advantage of for many, many years. The center also has provided interpreter certification to Fairview parents who wanted to become trained interpreters, not only to help out here at Fairview within their own community, but to also have the ability to be paid and employed as interpreters elsewhere. The center provides English classes, which again, many Fairview parents have taken advantage of, and job training opportunities. The goal of the center has always been to support immigrant parents in supporting their children in American public schools, specifically here in Skokie. But we've also tried to help them be able to promote themselves, whether it be through job training, learning English, or just serving as a parent volunteer in our community. We've also participated fairly significantly in the Village of Skokie's Coming Together programming. That's a collaboration throughout the entire village and has traditionally focused on different cultures that are represented here in Skokie. At the district level, we've gone through several curriculum adoptions. One component of every curriculum adoption is to include input from all of the stakeholders and to integrate equity through the lens of that particular curriculum. So that has been a part of our curriculum adoption process for many years. Mr. Shermer was a part of our science district learning team and the adoption of our science curriculum. And one small example that we looked for when we were reviewing curriculums were finding textbooks that represented scientists of different genders and different race and culture. So that's something that we do embed throughout all of what we do. The Learning Center and classroom book collections have been reevaluated to provide additional collections from different genres, as well as different authors. We have employed our first Director of Special Education here in the district to make sure that our special education students are well-supported. We've established an instructional program for special education students with more significant needs right here in-house. We have a gifted program that has had updated entrance requirements to make sure that we are representing students of all types in that program. And we've adopted a K8 social emotional learning curriculum to help support all of our students. This is just one of the goals in our current strategic plan. An important pillar, goal number three, surrounds diversity and inclusivity. And you can see the very specific activities that the district has undertaken over the last couple of years and where we're headed in terms of the strategic plan going forward. Other equity initiatives that I wanted to point out, some of which I've touched upon already, is the participation in the parent mentor program, the EL Parent Center, the interpreter training, the strategic plan, including goal number three, diversity and inclusivity, the various objectives that we've completed up to this point in time, the C training that has been taken advantage of by representatives of the administration, faculty, staff, and Board of Ed. Our Assistant Superintendent Jeff Fair served on the EdRed Equity Ad-Hoc Committee, as well as the Bi-Pop Hiring Subcommittee of EdRed. In September of 2020 is when the board first approved the equity audit. It's hard to believe it's been over a year since that point. We've done various staff trainings, including those on gender. This year, we have done training on disability awareness. And the district equity leadership team has been formed and met. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Dubiel. She's going to go through the expectations of the presentation and her part of the discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the expectations of what I will go over today, we'll discuss the phases of the audit, the quantitative and qualitative overview, and basically the summary of findings and next steps. As you have received an extensive comprehensive report that provides details into the equity audit process, this is designed to provide an overview of all. So a little bit information about the purpose of an equity audit, it is to determine areas of strength and needed improvement when it comes to advancing equity for each student. It is a fact-finding process that aids in identifying gaps and leads to tangible recommendations to address and mitigate inequities. So the equity process in itself is approximately a nine to 12-month process, and there are five phases to it. The first phase requires the district assembling a team called the District Equity Leadership Team. That team completes a needs assessment where they're evaluating the district and 10 major components with an associative rubric to identify areas of strength in the 10 components as a system. It is also a data point in the equity audit. Phase one also allows for the team to provide direction to the quantitative and qualitative process. Every equity audit is customized for the organization. The community or the in-house stakeholders know best of what that direction is, as every organization is very unique. The quantitative part involves the district reviewing a long list of data considerations, and they determine which pieces of data should be gathered, synthesized, and analyzed with an equity lens. The qualitative part involves what questions to ask to different stakeholders that will be participating in focus groups. Your district had three stakeholder focus groups: students, staff, and parents, guardians, caretakers. So the team decides what questions to ask those stakeholders. They do receive a bank of questions, but they're certainly not limited to those questions. Those questions are driven by what they know and their knowledge in their own community. So it does differ from organization to organization. After phase one, a huge thank you to the members of the Delt team. After phase one, phase two and three occur simultaneously. Phase two is where the district now gathers that data. They essentially have some homework, and that does take several months to upload and synthesize the data. And then that data ranges greatly. This is not an exhaustive list, but it includes such pieces as demographics, our academic programming services and support, like our spin-off program, the tier services, student discipline typically is presented to the state in-school and out-of-school suspension, which we must report. Academic progress can gleam from standard assessments to grading, absentism, the number of languages, staff and board demographics. This is not the entire list of data considerations that the team can agree to gather and synthesize so it can be analyzed with an equity lens. Phase three of the equity audit is then those focus groups. Your district had a total of 18 focus group. Couple of things with 18. When it comes to districts choosing an equity audit, it is designed by packages. So the cost of an equity audit will vary, oftentimes based on the extent and time that needs to be devoted to that audit. So 18 is a standard number that is provided by my company. So 18 focus group equals this amount and this time. 30 focus groups equals this amount and this time, and so on. So those 18 focus groups do come from an option of what the district can choose, which package is best for them. For the size of your district, the package chosen was appropriate. The team also decides of those 18 focus groups, how many are dedicated to students, to staff, to parents, guardians, and caretakers. They have complete ownership with that. It's just one of the many ways. An audit must be customized for a client. So they do the legwork and a lot of coordination and behind the scenes in communicating to stakeholders and organizing the actual focus group to participate. And then some people who do participate often, well, depending on the role, so oftentimes will sign up or commit, but don't actually participate. Your district overall had a really good representation. Now, one of the critiques to highlight is, is this a good number? There is no magic number. When it comes to research, you are depending on a sample size. It's no different than those who complete a survey. Survey, the difference is survey often is closed-ended, and it's ideal to have about 50% of survey respondents. You don't have a survey, you have focus group. So it's a lot more intense and it's open-ended. So the research is very clear. There is no magical number to achieve to suggest that it is a good case study or a sample size. So what we want to depend on is the quality of responses. In other words, there are focus groups where there could be 10 people signed up, and two people will be speaking. So we don't get lost necessarily on the number, even though it is important to acknowledge, but really the quality of feedback that respondents provide. Phase four and phase five of the audit is the analysis. By the time we reach phase four, we have received all the quantitative and qualitative data, and my team is analyzing that. It does go through four layers of analysis with different people to ensure impartiality. So different folks are analyzing the quantitative, different folks are analyzing the qualitative, and I analyze both. And finally, phase five, as you're aware, is the finding. It's the actual report that lists the findings, the recommendations, and how it is research-based. One thing to be clear when it comes to the equity audit, just like any other research project, it's always going to have limited capacity. So the limits will be to that timeframe of data that we analyze. The limits will also be to the information that's provided, the focus group responses, the data, and the needs assessment. It is not intended to be exhaustive. It is intended to analyze and make recommendations based on that information provided. The accountability framework. So in the equity audit, as you are aware, there is an accountability framework already integrated in the report. And what we know, and the research is very clear on this, is there's no one way to advance equity within any system. Systems are not designed and have not been designed to be equitable. So in order for an organization, particularly a school district, which is considered one of the most complex organizations in the United States, there is not one thing we can do to advance equity. There are multiple considerations. And so an accountability framework is ideal to help frame those recommendations. The accountability framework used is the five strands of systemic equity. This accountability framework is clear. When it comes to organizations, particularly public school district, there are systems considerations. Let's take a vulnerable look at our policies, our practices, our decision-making, our fiscal responsibility, our allocation, teaching and learning, our curriculum, our assessments, our academic programs, our instructional practices, student voice, climate culture, discipline, extracurricular, SCL, trauma-informed, as well as the climate and culture of the stakeholders who occupy the organization, professional development. There is no final destination to this learning. Equity is deeply embedded and has a multitude of paradigms. So the journey, as you probably have heard of the term equity journey, absolutely has valid considerations because there is no endpoint to the learning when it comes to equity. It is complex and it is pervasive, often related to power base because of identities and intersectionality of identities. It is very personal work, and it is very structural and systemic work. So the learning towards it will never end. Family and community as agency. We certainly can't do this work alone. So it is critical that we have partnerships with the families and the communities that we serve. So the recommendations offered are under this accountability framework to allow for implementation. Now, as districts implement their findings, let's be clear, there's not one strand that's more important than the other. So in other words, system is more important than teaching and learning. Teaching and learning is not important in family and community as agency. When organizations are serious and committed to an organizational commitment of advancing equity, they understand that they must do work in each of the five strands. So the recommendations in the report are designed to have recommendations under each of the strands. So under systems strand, you had two recommendations. Accelerate the commitment and communication toward equity through systemic and transparent means. One of the things that was clear was a lack of a plan, a specific plan. Now, you have a phenomenal strategic plan, but an equity plan is specific to just an equity plan. It utilizes accountability and measurable metrics, as well as transparency in its commitment. An equity plan is designed to align with the work that already exists, like strategic plan, district mission statements, a variety of commitments made by the district, but it is also designed by the stakeholders. And we'll talk a little bit about the equity action plan and what that's going to entail for the future so that the team can reconvene and decide, how do we prioritize these findings? And what do we do to make sure that they're actually feasible? We could do the work. So what is always going to be an important finding is we need a plan, and we need to be transparent in that plan, and it needs to be exclusively on equity because it is foundational. Another finding, and it's a very classic finding, it's an issue that is occurring across the country, and it's our ability to attract and retain highly qualified, diverse teachers and administrators, specifically with your district quantitative data by race/ethnicity, as well as gender. It is a challenging, challenging aspect. There are a multitude of districts that are often competing for the same highly qualified, minoritized candidates. So we have to perhaps think creatively. We have to perhaps have hiring practices where we are thinking critically of our interviewing questions for candidates. So even though we may not reach this subliminal number, whatever it may be, to our highly qualified diverse staff, we can ensure, for example, that when we do interview candidates, that they are committed and they understand the importance and the richness of the diversity in your district. Teaching and learning is another finding. Embed culturally responsive curriculum and resources in each content and grade. Exciting that the work is taking place in ELA and science and adopting the new curriculum at your district. As you can imagine, oftentimes, the expectation is that culturally responsive practices and pedagogy are the responsibility of ELA or social studies teacher. That is a huge misnomer. It is a responsibility of all educators to be culturally responsive to educators in all contexts. So being very deliberate in that, whether it's looking at our scope and sequence of our units, whether it's offering representation in our resources, there's almost an endless way to ensure that all educators embrace pedagogy and practices in every content and every grade. And oftentimes, people wonder what that is. The most basic example is culturally responsive curriculum is tapping into students' lived experiences and background. And so educators are not expected to be an expert in cultures. It's impossible. There are cultures within cultures. But what we can do is offer open platforms so the students can see themselves. So we welcome opportunities for students to share, of course, at their comfort level, while ensuring that our curriculum and instruction offers opportunity for students to see themselves, and we model what that could look like. We tap into students' lived experience. We make it make sense. So something as simple as teaching fractions, for example. Some may say it's not simple, but something as simple as teaching fractions, for example, making that curriculum come alive. How can teaching fractions, how is it relative to your work at home? Why is it important in the real world? Why does this skill matter? So it's not just coming in to a classroom, and not necessarily that's happening across the board. But oftentimes, if we're not very deliberate in our identity and our unit mapping to ensure that we have curricular resources in each content and grade, we are not providing the tools for the teachers to actually have that in front of them. And teachers absolutely have professional discretion about what that looks like, but offering opportunities within and being very intentional in our deliberate curriculum or resources can be key so that the students can see how this content is absolutely relevant and important for their development. 2.2, heighten the communication efforts to stakeholders about the equitable access and opportunity to your ELA math and spin-off programs. So it was interesting in talking to community stakeholders, talking to a variety of different stakeholders. I think it's the perception currently at your district about how spin-off programs can be accessed. And so there needs to be some consideration in the communication efforts. And I do not doubt that it is happening. Sometimes it is that perception, but it was one of the themes that came out in the conversations through the focus group with stakeholders. Student voice, climate culture. One of the findings in that was just to develop a student equity advisory committee. There will always be findings in each of the strands, just to be clear. And the student equity advisory committee could be an opportunity to continuously take pulse on how students are feeling, how they're experiencing, where they feel included and a sense of belonging in their experience as a pupil. Professional development, as mentioned earlier, that will be one of those findings if you create an action plan that will be consistently there. As we have some foundational professional development, for example, for all staff, we need to consider onboarding. Then we need to consider differentiation opportunities as people are very different places when it comes to understanding equity, as it comes to navigating it and demonstrating its practice in the classroom or beyond, because it's certainly not exclusive to teachers. It is an expectation that all staff have some common language and understanding when it comes to equity. And last, and certainly not least, is family and community as agency. Opportunities to also tap into our communities to develop that understanding and partnership and learn from them, and also them mutually learn from us about the spin-off programs, about our equity efforts, identifying perhaps barriers we hadn't noticed because of perhaps our existence in the systems and unknowingly having blinders to how our system functions. So having open opportunities and how to design that, there's a number of different ways, and that'll come through the conversations with the team because it really is endless on how to design that. But making sure that we are offering an open-door opportunity for community members to serve on the committee to consistently give us feedback and allow us to create that partnership, that relationship, letting them know that we are devoted to equity in all students.
So while we went through the process of the audit and collecting the data, I thought it was important to note that we didn't just step into a holding pattern. The district continued to work through all of the data that was requested from Dr. Dubiel. It was an intensive process, and it involved members of our staff from every part of the building. We conducted our professional development on equity topics so we could continue that work. And we employed, for the first time, our Director of Community and Student Engagement. which is a new role for Fairview and one that, you know, we believe is really going to help our efforts in moving forward down this, this pathway towards being a more equitable school and district. Our next steps, we will, and we have already placed on our staff development calendar for November 29th. We will be convening the district equity leadership team and we will be reviewing the equity audit and their findings. At that time, we will begin our work to prioritize the recommendations to pursue in the near and long term. We will communicate the findings and the next steps to parents and the full staff in January of 22. And we will work to develop an equity action plan with the district equity leadership team. And we've already been able to schedule Dr. Dubiel to support us in that work on April 29th, which is a district institute day and June 8th and June 10th, hoping that we may be able to springboard some summer curriculum planning at that time because school will be officially out for the summer. So those are our plans moving forward. I would be happy to entertain questions or feedback from the board. Dr. Dubiel will as well. So please, you know, let us know if you'd like to have clarification, if you have questions. Does anybody have questions? Anyone?
Just wanted to thank Dr. Dubiel for the effort that was involved in putting this together. My, my one question would be from all the findings that you've presented to us here. Is there one that you need the board to support you on in terms of not just you, but really our school district? Where can we help drive this forward together collaboratively?
So one of the things that we know is helpful and actually working with law firms in the state of Illinois is to further cement the equity work and commitment. There are a couple of things that we have received in some suggestions. It is ideal when we have board policies, board language on equity. When that's not in existence, a district statement from the board and its commitment on equity. And when that's unavailable, a district statement. What the lawyers have told us is it is ideal to have all three, especially when there is contention or a misunderstanding towards equity that the district and the leadership can stand behind the board policy, district statement and/or board policy, the board statement and/or the district statement. So ideally, that may be something that'll come out of the EAP, the Equity Action Plan. But is it ideal to have that? Absolutely. It only is going to further support the work that the leadership and all staff wants to do to serve all kids.
Thank you. And my, my follow up to that would be, given the new role that we've added, Jordan Kilpatrick, would you, is there anything that you could do to help ensure that this person in this role is most successful in our community?
And I think I might be able to speak for both of us on this. You know, first and foremost, Dr. Dubiel and I collaborated on the job description so that we could make sure that any individual that we were interviewing would have a really strong sense of what their role was going to encompass. And I think that, you know, numerous pieces have been put in place to support the new director of community and student engagement, including and not limited to, but including connecting her with other people in like positions in different districts. Here she's a singleton, so to speak. So connecting her up with people who have been in her role in different places, I think is a really great step to begin to help her onboard. But also just having full access to all of the administrative team, you know, in our support of her as she's working through getting to build relationships. You know, those are just some of the strategies that we've utilized. But I, I really think being able to be in this partnership with Dr. Dubiel at the right time, we were able to kind of bounce back and forth how best to approach the new position in the district.
And if I just may add, when organizations employ someone for such a role, should absolutely be applauded. It's a demonstration of their commitment that we have somebody dedicated to this work. But at the same time, we have to be realistic that the onus or responsibility for a system to move the equity needle forward cannot be placed solely on one individual. They're there to support, they're there to provide critical feedback, constructive feedback that can often be uncomfortable. So I think in furthering having this role, it's understanding the challenges that come with it and supporting the individual in that role.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, the D E L T, the Delta Equity Learning Team. So you, you brought up the slide with all the people that had been involved in the process of developing the, the plan. Would you envisage that that's the sort of size of a, an equity learning team going forward? And, and we, we should be keeping at that level to sort of try and draw from various different aspects of the school or, and, and how clearly the work's going to be pretty intensive in this next year to really get this thing moving. But how would you see things panning out in terms of just frequency of meeting and activities and things like that going forward with, with the team?
Well, I'm not sure I can comment on the frequency because that will vary. But the makeup of the Delta, the actual number, there's a real reasoning behind that. Knowing that it is absolutely required during phase one of the equity audit for a district to assemble a team, they are given guidance on the membership of that team. Because there is an assumption on my part that we continue the partnership and there's going to be an EAP because the findings from the equity audit, the report itself, as you know, can be overwhelming. So the idea is that your Delta should have a minimum of 25 people. We don't have to go extremely over that, but the reason for the 25 people is those individuals are going to be divided into those five strands. So they're going to be developed and so typically about five people in each of their strand. They're going to be divided to develop those objectives that meet those goals, either adopting the findings or identifying new areas of growth that allow for alignment to work that is currently existing accountability measures. So that's an ideal number to have a minimum of 25 people. I caution, who aren't really above that number. And I've worked with all sized teams that go above that number because we, we have to make some decisions. We have to go to, it's a planning group and their role is to make some decisions that is systemic for the benefit of all students. And then there are some strategic considerations as to who are the individuals in their role. Do they work with some of our historically marginalized identities? For example, do they work and do they have experience working with our special education kiddos? Do they have a background with working with our English language learners? Do they work in a Title I school, for example? That criticalness of working with those students of those identities is important as well as their own identities, their understanding and equity, because this is not a PD, if you will, but this is action planning. So they're going to need to be a very decently well-versed in the work so that they can develop a plan that makes sense for their district. So that's the logic behind that number, but the frequency.
Yeah, and I can't speak to the frequency at this moment. I will mention though, that that list will increase by one because we do have Jordan on board and she's not hearing this for the first time tonight. She is absolutely going to be integrated into the team. Her name wasn't included in this presentation because she was not a part of the previous work, but she will be added to the team. And, you know, we will be looking at the availability of our teams to meet, whether it be on Mondays, during staff development time, or as I already mentioned, that we were tapping an institute day to continue this work. So that will be, you know, more to come, but luckily this district has embedded within our current schedules, many opportunities for professional development, time to work together in committees.
Sounds good. I just wanted to be sure that having done all this, that we have the team to take it forward and that team is adequate and supported and equipped to move forward and to continue the journey. Anyone else?
Um, I had a question as, as I, as I'm aware that you're involved with other audit reports in other schools. Where would you say we fall on a kind of a spectrum?
So one of the things I purposely do not do is provide any type of rating of where districts are at when it comes to their equity journey. I can't tell you how different it varies. To make a fair comparison would suggest that the demographics are identical or alike, would suggest that the resources and personnel alike. And even if the data was alike, that would also have to suggest that the stakeholders that are participating in the focus group have similar mindsets. There are focus groups where there are things said that would be shocking, that is heartbreaking. And then there are things that are said that people recognize this is important for all kids. All kids need to feel cared for and loved and make sure that the institution of education remains the institution of education. We're educating the whole child. We are the only institution designed in the country charged with educating other human beings. So as a result, we are educating the whole child. And not sure if every organization, even if it was a district exactly like yours in the numbers, they would also have to have that mindset to do a fair comparison. I will say this, there are districts, and I've done multiple equity audits, that have a lot more findings than your equity audit. So hopefully that, that helps.
Does anybody else have anything to add or any other comments, questions?
Uh, just, just thank you for taking us on this journey and it is a journey. It's going to be something we're going to work through, you know, for the foreseeable future. It's, but thank you for getting it started for us.
Absolutely. On, on behalf of the board, yes, thank you so much for all your work. And thank you for guiding us through the process. And I, I know that we're not saying goodbye to you tonight or anything like that, that you're, you're still very much connected with Fairview. And as you said, at, at the outset, it, there is no final place with this. It is a journey and we're all on that journey and we're all learning all the time and we're all trying to improve. So thank you for setting us on that path. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you. I certainly didn't start the work. You all did. So really the accolades go to your community because it's clear that you are committed and you understand that this is forevermore. This is the long haul. So you certainly make it easier. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. So take a deep breath and get on to our next big report for the evening.
Absolutely. Well, we're going to move on to a presentation from Archon, the district's architects. And I'm not sure if George or our amazing architect, Mr. Jeff Huck are going to start. But I guess you two will sort that out. We'll get your presentation up. And they're really here to bring us sort of an update, bring the board an update as to what has been going on over the past couple of weeks and months. And then we will move on to talk more about finances of the project. So we get George first. Okay.
Jeff will be up here. Don't worry, but it's just George first. Thanks for having us again tonight. I know we missed you last month. So we kind of catch up the speed on some of the things that have been happening. If you recall, when, when we exited out of summer, we had come here showing you the overall 30,000 foot up in the air master plan picture. Since then, we've been kind of bringing it all the way down to street level. And to do that has been doing our due diligence and really digging into the existing building and coming up with more concrete solution of the master plan. So in September, some of the fact finding things that we did was to get a, an accurate survey done of your property. So before we were using it of, of an aerial photograph to kind of get a gauge of your property lines. Now that site survey really became a really deep dive, understanding of all your property line setbacks, what's adjacent to us, where the tennis courts fall, where the playgrounds fall, where our back part lot is with the, with the, with the running track. And that really helped implement a more accurate picture of kind of what we're doing for the final solution, right? Our engineers that we brought on board from a mechanical, electrical and plumbing side started looking at your existing systems, understanding what kind of power capacity the existing building has. Do we have enough electrical service coming to it to add on? Do we have to do anything crazy or larger scale pieces to it or not? Looking at your plumbing, looking at your mechanical, how it's designed and really starting to deep dive in and how to, the, the, the nuts and bolts of the, of the plan, if you will. As we got into October, the fun part happened where we circled back to staff and started getting into the spaces once again. The first time we met with them, we kind of were talking about big picture, where they want to be zoned, what kind of adjacencies they'd like to have, what kind of spaces that they don't have now, so we would like to create. This time it was, all right, now we're looking at the four walls of your room. How do those four walls want to be filled in, right? So it was, it was a much deeper dive in those regards and we had a nice long conversation with every group throughout the whole building and, and kind of use those notes to help further develop the master plan itself. As we exited out of that, all that information was kind of put together and digested. And really what you're going to see today is more of a fine tune of what we've been showing you up to date. A lot of things that we learned from constructability, from where things are touching onto your existing building, how they're touching onto your existing building, making logical and kind of cost effective solutions to kind of make sure it all can stand up, right? That was kind of what we did over the last few months. It's still evolving as it is, but we're, we're getting closer and closer and fine tuning both the South Edition as well as the East Edition as we, as we put the programs in there and kind of started the further developing the design process. What you're seeing here is your existing building. I have the cursory kind of showing everything. Laramie is, so east is the bottom of the page. And then one of these days we'll start flipping it sideways to confuse everyone back to what it should be, the north-south arrangement. But it fits nicely in a landscape format. So as long as we all get acclimated, we don't want to tilt our heads. This is kind of how we'll probably always show it. But from an existing building perspective, we have our front entrance, the front that you see to get everyone acclimated. We have our, the patio that kind of where we have our queuing of students. We have the library that's kind of in the front and for Laramie as well. All the spaces that are lining up here are classroom spaces off that main hallway. The reason I'm calling more attention to this is you'll see in the next plan of how these are the, the heavy, the heaviness of the renovation work that will be happening in the building would be happening right here in this kind of center core. Those classrooms here, classrooms here, and then this one that is actually subdivided into two programs currently, right? As we get towards the south, where the tennis courts are and the playground, this is the location where we'll be tacking on the new addition that will be the, the pre-K and K wing that will be married to the first and second graders that are happening here. The next plan, I will turn it over to Jeff as he kind of gets you more enlightened on the spaces themselves and how they've changed a bit.
So for those of you who haven't figured out the inside joke, a while back Cindy figured out that I blush usually, so that's why she's. So just a couple of things, as George mentioned, the meetings with the teachers in the staff as well as our engineers that have been ongoing, have really started to inform some of the details along with the overall, the bigger picture items. So a couple of things are different in the plan today where we are in the progress as of today than you saw last time. As we started to meet with our teachers, I'm sorry, our engineers, one of the things we figured out is that connecting up to the existing gym back here. If you remember, we had the multipurpose space in the back, back here by the gym. It's, it's fairly complicated because of the elevation changes, the steps coming out, but also the exposed structure. So they asked us a question, which we then took back to your administration with the idea that maybe we take that multipurpose room that was back here and we bring it down to the east and put it in the front of the building off of Laramie. And so we asked your district administration, is that something you would be comfortable with? And not only did they come back and say, yeah, it seems like something we'd be comfortable with. And oh, by the way, it might offer some advantages to us as well in how we would not only bring students in for pre-K, early childhood, but also how we might use that space after hours and for our relationship with the park district, which is good and, and for other things, maybe even board meetings. So one of the big changes that you'll see is that we now have a multipurpose room in this position on the, on the plan, right next to and looking out onto the playground area for the park district here, very close to a drop off that will be set up at different times of the day for different things, but primarily for pre-K parents to drop their students off. And then our classroom wing, which goes back for our pre-K and kindergarteners back this way, is held off of that existing gym by 15 feet in order to allow us to build easily without having to mess with that structural system of that existing gym. without having to mess with that structural system of that existing gem. It's a more efficient way of building it and at the same time it gets that multipurpose room in a, in a space that actually makes it a a lot more functional and, and perhaps adding some value than we had before. The one thing that it did by moving the multipurpose room down here is it, it displaced two special education classrooms. They were general classrooms. We happen to have them labeled as special ed. They didn't go away. We just slid them around the corner to where you see these two blue spaces here. And the classrooms that were displaced there, we've added to the front right in here where my cursor is. And we've connected, it allowed us to connect this second grade hallway to what we assume will be the third grade first floor on the two-story addition. So now we have a circulation, what I would call a circulation donut that goes in front of your, uh, area where your cafeteria is and your art rooms and such, back down through into the addition where the, the new library is going to be into these classrooms and it connects over here as well. So as you might have bubbles go through in, in grades, it might be easier to, uh, to allow them to, uh, shift and slide so that I'm not landlocked with my third grade and my fourth grade. I've got flexibility now that I didn't have before. So just by simply moving that middle or that multipurpose space to the front of the building, we're able to pick up some efficiencies. The other piece that's a little different than what you saw last time is in the area of the two STEM labs. We had always been showing a STEM lab here in this corner. And we had been showing the library essentially in this area where my cursor is. And we had the second STEM lab right here where my cursor is. And it was a two-story STEM lab and there was a courtyard right in here right between the two STEM labs. As we were talking to your STEM teachers and we started to understand their program and started to understand how they would like to function, it became important that they had a shared storage space in between. Um, and, and that it was okay to have them both in a single story space. This wall right here is your existing exterior wall. So we've put the two STEM labs, one here and one here next to each other with, with a storage space in between and your tech hub and tech director in between. And allowed the library now to be a large two-story space in this area and taken that courtyard out. We haven't necessarily lost that ability to go outside from the library because this area that's currently shaded is blue here is actually going to become a, a little courtyard or we're proposing that it becomes a little courtyard off of the library that I could then go in, take a book outside and read. But it's a protected courtyard. It's not, you're not worried about a student wandering off. The only way they would access that, it would be through the library. So we've, we've improved our library a little bit through that. It's more efficient. Uh, it's a little bit larger. Our STEM labs now work a little bit better together than we shouldn't, we had shown before. And some of our support spaces, if you wanted to lock off this library and use it after hours for, for anyone and lock the rest of the building off, now start to, uh, show up with washrooms and some team rooms and some other spaces on this first floor. So a couple of things that we've done have essentially shifted volume around, simplified construction, um, and gotten us a lot more efficient in the, uh, the exercise. And all that came out of our meetings with your teachers and your staff as well as the meetings with our engineers. So if I go to the next page, we wanted to show these next two pages just to reinforce again that we're touching the building in two different locations. Two different construction schedules essentially, although they would overlap. We still have on the south end of the building, the pre K and kindergarten wing with its multipurpose space. It's just the biggest difference is it's not touching the gym now and the multipurpose room is up here. And then if I go to the next, and that could be a project. And if I go to the next page, the two-story addition with the library in the front of the building, which really continues the same aesthetic that you're going to have, uh, that's from the two thousand edition on down to the entire length of the building. That's really a separate project as well with the interior spaces, these STEM labs, that science lab that George mentioned. Our student support services spaces with psychologists and social workers and counselors and all those folks in this area. Um, and then just shifting a couple of classrooms around. All of that is, uh, stuff that would happen during the same period as this addition, but that work inside the existing building would be summer type work. Uh, but this would be essentially, it's a, it's a separate project, but projects that overlap each other. Did I miss anything, George? Any questions for us?
Uh, yeah, I just a quick question that, um, you obviously consulted with the staff and they've had their say, which I think is wonderful and it is amazing the, the things that, that come out from, from those conversations. I, my little concern is, you know, how, how is this affecting the bottom line of it all if we're, if we're changing this and adding that? And you know, they say the most expensive words in home improvement are while we're at it.
Right, right.
Because you just keep adding and think, oh, we could do this, we could do that. Does it change things much?
We're very conscious of your budget. So as we shift things, one of the first questions we ask is that, is it going to affect the budget? And we're very fortunate in the, the shifts that we've made have actually reduced slightly the overall area. When, and at this point, area equals dollars. So we're within the same budget. And in addition to actually shrinking the area, it's slight, it's a little bit, but we didn't go the other way, which is good. The biggest thing that we did is we made the construction process more efficient. We eliminated some of the, um, complexities that were there just because of the shape of the existing building. So in both cases, we've gone the right, we've gone the correct direction. One of, this is probably one of the last times I would say that we'll only show you floor plans. The next time we present to you, we're going to begin to show you what is the look of the building, how are the, how is the exterior detailed? How some of these spaces get light into them? What are the interior spaces begin to look like? That's our next step in our development. Um, and I think what you'll see is we're starting to get more, as we do more and more of that, we become more and more efficient in the, we're always looking for opportunities to become more efficient in how it's built.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm going to throw one more piece to the puzzle. If we had a, a next steps piece that you'd see here, uh, as we exit the gate out of this schematic stage or design development stage, we're going to have a lot of checks and balances that are going to be going forward. So one of our next milestones at the end of this month is to really take all our engineers' work, our work and start pricing it more detailed, right? We started big picture area. Now we're going to assign more trades and understand, since you know, mechanical systems better, the, the numbers will get more and more accurate. They'll still be conservative because there's a lot of unknowns. But step one will be that, then at the end of the year will be another round and then after that will be another one. So as we march towards any finish line that we're going towards, whatever our final target is for a deadline, by the time we get towards that deadline, we should have a really accurate picture of what that cost is going to be before we make any step of going out to bed. So we would never take you out there with any sort of guesswork.
I want to piggyback off of your questions. Have you guys, I mean, we want to make all the changes we can now before all that detail goes into, to play. I mean, the changes. Have you guys exhausted all the conversations with the administration and is there anything left or is that kind of all and completed at this point?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say I think we're ninety-five percent there. Um, you know, there's still some pretty major topics for discussion. You know, it's been kind of a cool process because each time we meet, we kind of focus in on another part of the project. So we've spent a lot of time talking about, um, that multipurpose room and where it should be and what we're going to use it for. We spent a great deal of time talking about the parking lot and how it should flow and how we would do drop off and pickup. So we're kind of doing it piece by piece, kind of big pieces. Um, and I would say we're, we're pretty close. We are planning on circling back to our student groups, um, who, who met a, a while back now. I can't exactly remember when, but we're going to revisit and kind of get more, let them know what's going on and show them sort of how their ideas and input have helped to, to mold this project. But I'm sure they're going to give us some additional feedback that, you know, might be, you know, something that changes, you know, the, the plan as well. So I feel like we're in a, a very good position. Um, and like I said, I really have appreciated that we've sort of just taken one chunk at a time because there are many, many, many details that go with each piece. So.
I just have a quick question about the, so the fifteen feet of space that was added to this one between the gym and right, originally they were touching. Uh, now there's fifteen feet of space. What, what would you imagine going right, right now that fifteen feet is asphalt? Would it stay asphalt or would that be landscaped? How would that? Cause then there are classrooms that will be looking out basically onto the wall of the gym.
Oh, let me start it and you can add on to, uh, I'll start it and then George will, will jump in a little bit on this as well. If you remember and, and, and I wouldn't blame anyone who doesn't remember, we've shown you a lot of different plans. The classrooms that we had in that area before were butted up right next to that, that existing gym. So what was lacking in a couple of those classrooms were windows. So the biggest thing that we're gaining is windows. As we begin to develop this, we, we want to take a look at what type of window is the most appropriate. My guess is that we probably don't want to have a window down here that has you looking at the asphalt and at the, uh, at the side. But more likely we're looking at high windows along that, uh, that passageway. We haven't gotten to the point yet where we've, we've come to any real definitive ideas with, with our team and our team, including your administration, our, uh, you know, our engineers and everyone. Um, I think that's the next step to understand that. We do know that we have to get back in that space to maintain it. Likewise, any courtyard that we're looking at is how do, how do we maintain it? So it's a great question. We're still the, we're still in the development process on it. We do know that getting natural light into those classrooms is a benefit, even if it is light from a shaft between a gym and, and a, and a wall. I think I probably have answered the, as, as far as I can at the moment, unless you've got something.
I mean, you pretty much hit it, Jeff. The, if you look at those, of those three classrooms, the uppermost and the, the bottommost or the west and the east can have windows opening towards the track and the other one opening towards that south classroom. So really it was the middle one. And as we met with teachers, one of the, the, the pictures they showed us and things they liked was in the hallways, is there any way to get some more clear story windows, higher up windows into the hallways to make them get more natural light into the corridors? So that's kind of the, one of the ways that Jeff's talking. Not only do we get higher on the outside, but having on the inside helps get those volumes to feel even better, right? So, uh, we are experimenting with those right now, but that was a really good point and that's a really good piece that we're trying to figure out.
And the other thing I will add is in talking with our P E staff, they use those self-exit doors for moving equipment in and out. You know, one thing they noted to us is they prefer ramps rather than stairs. Um, so we have to keep in mind their use of the space as well. So I would guess it's going to be a, a harder surface for them to be moving equipment in and out, but you know, that could be framed by grassy surfaces. Uh, you know, as they said, we haven't quite gotten that far, but there are some details that go with that space that we have to pay attention to.
And, and I'll add one more piece to this and, and we've talked, and if you can follow my cursor, we, we've talked from a long-term standpoint, master plan standpoint, about how we can take spaces like this courtyard here and the courtyard that's back here, uh, in the lower level wing. And then this space here, uh, and how can we turn those into, um, educational learning opportunities, outdoor learning opportunities during the times of the year when you can actually, you can actually go outside and it's not too cold and all of that. We're all, you know, as I mentioned before, we're proposing that this blue space here become an outdoor space off of the library. All of that means that we have to spend some sort of attention to detail on what that environment is like. It wants to probably be something more than just asphalt and brick wall. Is there a way we can, um, put some sort of amenity into those spaces so that it's a place that someone might want to go? If you notice in these classrooms here, each of them has a second exit even along this side. Because of the size of those rooms, we're required to have a second exit. It would be nice if we could actually look at that as an opportunity as opposed to a, a necessary evil that passageway there. And maybe there's something we can plan long-term in this passage that satisfies what Dr. Whitaker was just saying about the need to take stuff out from the, the gym, but also an opportunity much like what we might address as a learning opportunity in these other courtyards. So we're not there yet, but I think that's in the back of our mind as we, we look at that space. And maybe it actually becomes a nicer space than what we're, you know, what we might imagine today.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Questions, right one?
One more question. I just, that green space next to the gym, that's, would that be open to the public or is that, is there, would that be closed off? Is this, is it safety?
You're talking this space here where my cursor is?
Yes, correct.
One of the things we, I'm sorry, one of the things that we would definitely do is, is gate that off. The last thing you want is for someone to wander back there and hang out overnight. You know, it's bad things happen in places like that. So, uh, it would definitely be a gated off space, which would also make it suitable for an outdoor learning opportunity because you're not worried about supervision.
Okay. So, um, okay. Ready to move on?
Ready to move on, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, uh, we will get the next presentation up. Elizabeth Pennacey has joined us this evening from Raymond James. So we'll get Elizabeth up. Thank you for being here with us.
There we go. Great. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to go through the, um, funding plan for the project. Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Great. I'll quickly review the bond market. This chart shows interest rates for the thirty-year, the ten-year and the one-year triple A rated MMD index. The yellow, the red and the purple line, the blue line is the ten-year U S Treasury and rates have been coming down since January of nineteen. And then we hit the pandemic in March of twenty twenty and interest rates went up dramatically. As many investors were fearful that, uh, people weren't going to pay property taxes and there would be defaults. So the Federal Reserve stepped in and became the lender of last resort, also brought the Fed funds rate down to zero. And i- interest rates then, um, came back to normal and continued on their downward slope till we hit in August twenty twenty, the lowest point of interest rates ever. And you can see we're been pretty stable. With the exception of the blue line, which is the U S Treasury, which has, um, been going up and down and up again. Uh, and our municipal bond market is beginning to follow along a bit as we, um, anticipate and experience inflation. Whether it's from supply chain or if it's permanently here with us seems to be the question of the day. So, um, we anticipate we will have higher interest rates in the future. The bond market has priced in two Fed rate increases, one in the second quarter and one in the fourth quarter of twenty-two already. So, but we're still relatively low from a historical basis. So the district has a statutory debt limit of thirty-eight, uh, point two million. That's six point nine percent of the E A V. You also have a non-referendum bond working cash bond limit of sixteen million. These are set forth in the statute at, at the state level. Just to review your bond rating, um, you have had no debt for quite a while, so there's no bond rating currently, but back in uh, twenty sixteen, the district's general obligation debt was rated double A two. That was an upgrade from February of oh six. So very strong rating. The highest rating is triple A. So you're two steps away from that very highest rating. Double A two is a very strong rating. So, um, funding needs, I, uh, the district's considering these projects as your architects just outlined for classroom space and, um, full day kindergarten and, and early childhood. And you have both referendum and non-referendum funding options. The options we're going to talk about tonight are non-referendum. The first option is with, using the debt service extension base. And the second is using debt certificates, which is like, uh, a loan that you're repaying out of your operating fund. So it necessitates budgeting for those payments on an annual basis. So, um, you have the ability to fund these projects without referendum. The three sources are fund balance of seven million, debt service extension based bonds of ten million and debt certificates of five million for total proceeds of twenty. and debt certificates of $5 million for total proceeds of $22 million. So first, I'm going to talk about the fund balance. This is the update from the FY21 audit, hot off the press. And it looks at your funds, the operating funds, education, O&amp;M, transportation, IMRF, working cash and TORT, then debt service and capital projects. So the district's fund balance policy is to maintain 75% of the year's spending in the fund balance. And currently, based on the 2021 audit, the operating funds have 136% of expenditures in the fund balance. So if we take $7 million and apply it to the capital projects, that leaves you with an ending fund balance of $10.5 million, which is 82% of the revenues. Sorry, fund balance as a percent of revenues, not as expenditures, is your policy. So anyway, you can afford to spend the $7 million out of your fund balance and still maintain your policy above your policy. So that's fund balance. Next, I would like to talk about the non-referendum debt service extension-based bonds. There are three types: working cash, life safety, and funding bonds. These would be working cash. They require a petition period and a public hearing. You'll consider that resolution of intent later tonight to authorize borrowing. We're looking at $10 million. So hopefully, if you can't see this on the big screen, you can see it on the screen on your computer. We're looking at issuing $10 million. It would be repaid over 15 years. Now, these type of bonds are limited to the district's debt service extension base, which is in the fourth column from the left. That amount is part of the tax limitation law and goes back to 1994. In 1994, the district had approximately $650,000 that it spent on principal and interest on bonds. And that became your debt service extension base. In 2009, they applied the CPI to that amount. So it is currently, in 2021 levy year, $735,445. That means you can pay off that amount of principal and interest on bonds a year. You can go out for a maximum of 20 years. To generate $10 million, you need to go out about 15 years. But it's important to think about when you might be able to access those funds again. So to that end, we have created what I will call a channel in 2031. So if you look at the column that's got the highlighted numbers in green, that begins in 2031. So in the last five years of the repayment, we're reducing the payments to allow you to issue bonds again in 10 years. So that gives future boards some flexibility. So this debt service extension base is a debt service levy outside of the operating levy. And so there is a slight tax rate increase to that, and it's approximately $15 for a $300,000 home. It's on average $123 a year for those 15 years. Here's a graphic of it. I like the graphic. So the line is the debt service extension-based limit. The green bars represent the debt service on the $10 million bonds. And you can see in 2031, the bars don't go all the way up to the line. That's where future boards will have the option to issue additional debt. I'll also add, these bonds will be callable, so you would have the opportunity to refund them at a later date to issue new bonds or to save interest if the interest rate market permits. So again, the debt service extension base is part of the tax limitation law. The estimated all-in true interest cost is 2.19% based on this 15-year payback. That includes a cushion of 25 basis points because we always like to be conservative. And that, so if you were to issue those bonds today, the interest rate would be something like 1.95%. So great time to issue debt, even though we have experienced a little bit of increase in the interest rates at this time. As I mentioned, you have the flexibility to issue additional bonds in 10 years, and the bonds are callable typically after nine years. The next type of debt is debt certificates, and these are paid from the district's operating funds, typically the O&amp;M fund. The maximum length is 20 years. They count against the district's debt limit. And the legal requirement is simply the adoption of a debt certificate resolution. These type of debt does not increase taxes at all because you're making room within your current budget to pay the debt service on these bonds. So here, we're looking at issuing $5 million, okay? And we're going to pay that off over 15 years as well. The annual payments are under $400,000, about $390,000 a year. So the district has had surpluses in prior years. Part of that surplus would now be dedicated to budgeting for this $390,000 payment. The debt certificates would also be callable prior to maturity after nine years. And they would be issued at the same time as the $10 million, so we would have efficiency in issuing both pieces at the same time. The interest rate here is estimated to be 2.22%. It also has a 25-basis-point cushion, so again, we're looking at an interest rate under 2% for these bonds. So this is just a summary. Because you've got 15 years and a call, there should be future flexibility, but it does take budgetary discipline. The good news is the district again has generated surpluses, so should be able to afford these payments. So before I jump into the schedule, I'll just pause here and see if you have any questions. And by the way, this is the information that we talked about at the town hall back on October 12.
Well, it's complicated.
I'm sorry.
No, I did look at some of this before and tried to follow it. And I know our finance committee have already discussed this and worked through it. As far as I understand it, what you were saying about that you had that graphic where the line went up and there were the bars. So you're saying that the final years have the potential to be sort of re-amortized and would actually be sort of changing the debt at that point and kind of like refinancing your mortgage?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
That's what I mean. So you could either refinance, you know, at year nine, or you could issue new bonds at year 10 because there's some room to pay interest under the 2031 bar, and you could add additional bonds. So we just want to preserve some flexibility for boards and administrations in the future.
I'm guessing it's unlikely that those are going to be at this sort of 2% or 2.2% though by that time, right?
Hard to know.
Hard to predict, but it is historically quite low right now.
It's very low from a historical perspective, yes.
If this $10 million bond is issued in 2022, does the repayment start in 2021 still?
That's the tax levy year. So 2021 levy year will provide you dollars 6122 and 12122.
Any questions? Well, thank you for explaining it to us as simply as possible. So we will be...
I'm going all the way around, sorry. I meant to go to the schedule. Because tonight, in the schedule, get to the right slide, sorry guys. Okay. So here we are, November 17. Tonight, on your agenda, you will consider the resolution of intent to issue the bonds. And a public hearing will be scheduled for your board meeting on December 15. So once the resolution of intent is approved, the notice of intent goes in the newspaper, starting a 30-day petition period. And if 10% of the registered voters were to submit a petition, then the issue would be required to be voted on at referendum. So this is the process set forth in the statute. Public hearing on December 15. On January 19, the board would approve the bond resolution and the debt certificate resolutions. So that would be $15 million altogether, $10 million of the DSE working cash bonds, and $5 million of the debt certificates. So we would then go to sell the bonds in the market, assuming appropriate market conditions. And then you would receive the proceeds in February. And the important thing about this timing is that by issuing the bonds in January, we can still get on the 2021 levy, so we can start paying principal and interest back. If we go beyond March 1, then we're on to the next levy year, so.
The timing's important.
Timing's important, right? Thanks.
So yes, we will be taking action on this this evening. So now's your chance to get any questions answered before we take that action. So last call, everybody. Okay? Good. Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. I really appreciate it. And thank you to our architects as well for their presentation. Very detailed, very good explanation for us all. Thank you very much. So moving along, we have our superintendent's report for November.
Thank you. I really believe that most of what's included within this report has either been reported on or will be reported on prior to the end of this meeting. So I'm not going to review any of that. I will mention that we have hit a little bump in the road with our shield testing because the district, as are many in Illinois, are receiving a new third-party vendor to conduct the testing. So we're hopeful that transition will be seamless. But that's something we've been working hard on making happen over the last couple of weeks. And the only other thing, and again, we'll talk about this a little bit more in detail later, we did spend a significant amount of time reviewing proposals from construction management companies, interviewing construction management companies, checking references, et cetera. And we do have a recommendation for the board later this evening. So I will keep it short unless there are questions from board members about anything included on that report. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. So I also want to keep this next item extremely short. But this coming weekend is the IASB conference, and I will be the board delegate for that. And when we discussed the resolutions last month, there were two that we were unsure of. And I confess, I literally forgot to turn the page. And there was one at the very end that I missed last time, so that was my fault entirely. But so I just wanted to double-check the three that are still in question. One was item number 11, which is clean energy infrastructure federal funding. This was a proposal from a school district to be able to get more funding for solar panels and clean energy infrastructure from the federal government. The funding would be from the federal government to aid that. The committee, resolutions committee at IASB actually said that they do not recommend it. And we had some sort of doubt about it at the time. Their logic behind it was that, you know, we're at this place in time where people have already invested, and there are other people that are going to invest, and it would only really benefit the people going forward rather than those people that have already made those investments. So we kind of left it that we didn't really know where we felt about it. So does anybody have any thoughts, or shall I go with the recommendation of the committee at IASB?
I would say, sorry, I would say my recommendation would be to adopt it.
To adopt?
Yep.
Okay.
I agree. I think any green initiatives that we can support, I would agree with Shereen.
Okay. Me too.
I was going to say do not. I was going to go with IASB just because to keep federal funding out of the minute with education. It's not against any green initiatives. It's just so that funding stays at a local level.
Yep. Okay. And Sargon, any thoughts?
I would lean with the IASB's recommendation.
Okay. Well, that kind of puts it in a bit of an even split. So I may just touch base with our two absent board members this evening and get their opinion, and they can point me in the right direction one way or another. I mean, I can't think how else to sort of resolve that right now. I'll get their opinion on it, and I will let you know how I will be voting according to which way that falls.
Wait, can we just, Shereen and Sargon and Erin and yourself, we're moving towards the recommend.
Correct.
To adopt.
No, no. Sargon and Jackie were both to go with the IASB, which is to not recommend.
Okay.
And the other three of us were to recommend.
So you want to touch base with the other two?
Yes, so we can figure that out.
I just want to make sure we have it straight.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. I mean, at the end of the day, this is just a recommendation about, you know, what recommendations we have for IASB to move forward with legislation. It doesn't mean that this is going to become law tomorrow by any means. And I also should point out that if this is on the do not recommend, do not adopt list, then it won't necessarily be discussed anyway, and it will just be dead in the water. So that will only be if somebody questions it, if the district submits an appeal, that it will actually even come up for discussion anyway. So I'd just like to be prepared one way or the other. So the other one that we were undecided about was the number 16. Oh no, I'm sorry. Number nine, yes, number nine. I'm jumping back to number nine. They're in a different order on my sheet. So this one was resolving to advocate for local school district control of content and curriculum for health and sex education courses offered in the district. And the real issue with this is that there is Senate Bill 081A out there right now that is suggesting that there should be the language "may" rather than "shall". So it's much more about local control rather than being something that is most strictly regulated by a mandate. So that was the one that we were unsure about. The recommendation of the committee was to adopt it on the lines of local control and having districts decide how they want to do it. So any thoughts on that?
It's, I'm sorry, it's local control versus state?
The recommendation of the IASB committee is to adopt it with the view that it allows for local control.
I would be in favor of local control.
I'm in the same boat. I would agree with what they're saying to adopt and keep control at a local level.
Okay.
I also agree.
Yeah, I agree as well.
We're good then. That will be do adopt. And then finally, yes, apologies that I skipped over the very last one accidentally last time. This one was pretty broad. They want to overhaul the entire school code. I mean, that sounds really simple in a sentence until you realize that the school code is this big. So the recommendation of the committee is to not adopt, not simply because they don't think that the school code should be reviewed. It should quite probably be reviewed. But the idea that you could just sum that up in one sentence and just overhaul it was far too broad. And they wanted a resolution that had a greater, a narrower focus going forward to focus on the real issues of the school code that needed the focus. So their recommendation is to not adopt because it was too broad. And I agree with them.
I agree with them.
I also agree.
I agree with the recommendation.
I mean, it's just, it's like, let's change everything. That's basically what it says. And it's like, well, what do you mean, everything? Okay, so I will go with the do not adopt, which as I say, the protocol is that it probably won't come up for vote anyway unless it is appealed by the district. So thank you. So thank you for helping me move through those quite quickly. I will just consult with the other couple of board members on the first one that we talked about. And we'll go with that. So board committees and representatives, the first one on my list here is finance and personnel committee. Erin, do you have a report?
Yes, the finance and personnel committee met. I think that was last week and we discussed the district audit and we had a presentation by our auditor that was very informative. We also discussed the 21 tentative district levy that we will be talking about a little bit later today. Is there anything else I'm forgetting?
Great, thank you. I'm up next for Edward and forgive me, I'm I've got too many notebooks here and I've got. Thank you. So Edward has been busy. The veto session took place between October 19th and 21st and then the 26th to the 28th. And it was pretty active. They've been working on. Various different things, the ones that they mentioned most recently. Was. I should have got my glasses, I'm sorry. Yeah, there was some proposed language to the healthcare right of conscience act, which is being cited by many people. As. A legal reason for being exempt from from getting a vaccine and being exempt for any sort of mandate about getting a vaccine. That has been passed and that is with the governor to be signed or will be with the governor. I don't think it is actually there yet. There was also some legislation. About schools providing resource guide crafted by ISB on sexual misconduct. The Edward is still working with legislators on that. That's about it is the main ones. I know that there was a meeting this last Friday. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. But they are moving forward with their ad hoc committees. I shall be participating when what that whenever I can. But I think there is still more to go in in to the the end of this. Session that we're in right now. Sorry, I really should have bought my glasses. So. We don't have. Nora Downing here this evening, so she actually forwarded a report to us. And you'll read that for us.
Yeah, so this is just a summary of notes from the NTDSE board meeting that took place on November 2nd. There will be vaccination clinic at Malloy for the NTDSE community. The date for that is to be determined. Dr. Mark Dixon, an expert in autism strategies and assessment of those strategies, will be partnering for a year long professional development with the NTDSE staff. Fairview provided space for NTDSE staff on their professional development day, and they were grateful for that. A total of 18 Fairview students are being serviced by the NTDSE programs. And the Early Childhood Alliance focuses focuses on providing screening and supporting children birth age to three. They are working with our district to identify families that might be eligible for some home based head start services.
Great, thank you. And then lastly is PTA liaison. Also, Diana is unable to be here this evening, but she gave you a couple of notes.
Um, actually, Ms. Larkin is going to share the notes from the PTA meeting. Oh, she was she was present as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I was present for the last general meeting, which was last week. There was a quite bit going on, so the PTA diversity, equity and inclusion had their presentation from Dr. Lilana Wells via Zoom on October 27th, which was while attended and received by the community. Kijal and Steve planned an amazing trunk or treat on Saturday, October 30th. I actually attended with my family and it was such a wonderful event. There were 25 different trunks decorated and it was so well organized, especially in such a year of still uncertainty and it was really nice to see everyone together. There was classroom parties for K4 students on Friday, October 29th, which were great. Room parents coordinated wonderful activities and dropped off different activities for classroom teachers to run. There was conversation about upcoming events, so the PTA spiritware sale that was mentioned earlier, which ends tonight. We also had conversation about upcoming room parent activities for the winter parties and the room parent shares expressed there was a really great turnout this year in terms of collecting fees, which helped to fund teacher appreciation lunches and support staff breakfasts along with. The upcoming party, so that was awesome. So thanks to everyone for all their support with that. We're tentatively still planning on a book fair in February, but still TBD on that. But the chairs for the book fair are really trying to coordinate and some plans with Ms. Bastian, our learning center director. The diversity, equity and inclusion committee is working to plan another event. They're still in the process of what that might look like. And then I think one of the biggest highlights of this year and huge improvement for our community has been the the PTA website. So a couple of parents have really collaborated on taking charge of it. If you haven't had the opportunity to check it out, it's linked in our in the PTA newsletter every week. But it's really provides a great explanation of who the PTA is here at Fairview, what they do, who's involved. There's videos and explanations of committees, so there's also access to the digital directory, so a lot going on for PTA.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item is freedom of information requests. I can report that there was one request received in this last month and it was responded to appropriately. Our next item is information items and correspondence. Do we have anything to report?
Yes, there was one item of correspondence since our last meeting and that was from technology director Healy. It was a thank you card for the fruit following his surgery.
Good, I'm glad he's doing well. So next is public comment. And I would ask the members of the audience to address the board. If they would come to the microphone, state their names and we will set the three minute time limit, which will be kept by the. Or secretary. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the board?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Palmer and I'm a Fairview parent. First, I want to thank you for the measures that you have taken this fall in helping slow the spread of COVID in our community. You've offered the shield testing, which has caught some asymptomatic cases and you've continued to ask students to wear masks. And I want to thank you also for the vaccine clinic that you've set up for children who are now eligible for that. That's really a gift to our students, but also to the wider community. So thank you. I also. Want to encourage you to follow Dr. Duviel's suggestion that you create board policies, a board statement and a district statement that state clearly and specifically your commitment as a district to equity. As she noted, equity work is most successful when like the widest range of stakeholders in the community embrace it. And I think for that to happen in a large organization, it needs to be embraced comprehensively, unequivocally and transparently by the people at the top, and that's you. There's been currently a lack of trust, I think, on the part of some community members who don't believe that you are committed to equity in a real way. And I think this is an easy way that you can start to begin to rebuild that trust and also to get greater buy in from the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
My name is John Delgino and I'm a resident of District 72. It it's my hope. I I have been using the the track. At Fairview for 30 something years now, walking, bicycling. And it's my and I know the students use it extensively and the community does as well. And it's my hope that with the renovations that something will be done for the track because it's in horrible condition right now. And and I I thought this is an opportunity that we have. And if we can, I think it would be a a great boon for the students, obviously, and it would be really great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishes to address the board? I should also add that Dr. Whitaker informed me that there were no comments received from the public via the online form this month. So there are no other comments to be made that way. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your points. So we're ending up with our action items this evening. First is to approve the district facility projects as were presented earlier this evening. So this is basically approving the presentation that we had from our architect Archon. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the the district facility projects?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any final questions or comments anybody wants to make?
I I would just like to clarify, my recommendation is that the board is approving this evening all of the projects that have been discussed. The south wing that would include the preschool and kindergarten as well as the improvement and the rebuilding of the learning center. So at times throughout the course of the last several months, we've talked about parts of the project. But this evening, my recommendation that I'm asking the board vote on is to approve all of those parts.
Everybody's clear? We've voted for all the projects that have been proposed proposed to us.
Sorry, one just that that also includes the parking lot re right in that diagram, the flipping of the parking lot.
Yes, the parking lot, the underground water storage, everything related that you've heard about. There will also, it will also include a revamp of furniture within the building. So throughout the building, there will be touches, but that the dollar amount that you've seen and that you we've talked about includes everything.
Okay, everybody clear on what they're voting? Okay, in that case, could the secretary please call the oh, yeah, we'll do these individually. Could the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliano?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Okay, the projects are approved. The second action item is for a resolution declaring the intention to issue $10 million working bond fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash and directing that notice of such intention to be published in the manner provided by law. In English, it is basically moving forward up with our proposal to issue the 10 million in bonds, proceed with the public. Discussion about it on next month's meeting. Everybody clear what we're voting on that? And I got that right? Thank you. Okay, and no other questions on that one, clarifications? Okay, in that case, with the secretary, please call the roll.
Sorry, do we? We need to have a motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right. That's motion and second. Our motion.
My second.
Now the voice.
Now we'll go. Thank you.
Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliano?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes. Okay, we'll be proceeding with that. So next, can I have a motion and second to approve the employment of Patrick Quinn and Associates as construction manager?
Sorry, Frederick Quinn.
It says Patrick.
I know, that was my mistake.
That's all right. They're all Irish. Okay, Frederick Quinn. And Associates as construction manager. Our motion, second. Okay, we having some with the discussion or explanation on this?
Yes, Mr. Ferr is going to expand upon it.
Sure, thank you. So we went through the, much like the architect last year, we went through the RFQ process for hiring a construction manager. This is the first time in 20 years that we've had a construction manager to to manage projects at the building. With that RFQ, we received nine responses from companies. These were all companies that were either recommended by our architects or from other school districts, and they all did extensive work with schools. From those nine companies, we looked for three to four that we thought offered the best solution to our issues right now. The evaluation of these in Ms. Lenoir and Mr. Sherman, remember this from the architect interviews as well, is that we were looking for companies that would be that are familiar with Niles Township, that were familiar with Illinois as a whole, familiar with school districts. And then also we looked at it through the lens of the projects that we're looking at specifically. We picked four. We had interviews with those candidates and from those candidates, we selected Frederick Quinn. At this time, they have begun working with Archon already. Our our lawyers and Frederick Quinn's lawyers are strictly working out a contract right now in regards to both fees and language for the project. But as far as we're saying right now, they are already meeting with our architects to actually go through the initial stages of introducing because they have not worked with Archon in quite some time, but they are familiar with people at Archon and with projects Archon has done. So by next board meeting, we'll have an agreement in place to to actually have signature for the board for board approval. But at this time, we're recommending Quinn be hired as construction manager for the project.
Thank you. So Jackie and I were able to be a part of the the meetings, interviewing the final four. And yeah, definitely this particular company stood out as as being. Most appropriate for our project. I think we felt comfortable that we weren't going to make a terrible mistake by choosing any of them, that they were all very competent and capable and have worked on many projects like this before. I think it was kind of a balance in terms of size, you know, where where we were as a size of a project versus some of the companies that worked on much bigger things and then you feel like you're a smaller fish. And sometimes it was just simply just the the presentation itself, isn't it, that the people speaking, that you just felt more confident with some people than others, because if there was lots of. Noncommittal kind of language, then there was concern that they wouldn't really be your best advocate at at times for for getting things done. So so they were definitely my choice too. So anything to add?
I neglected to mention, we got recommendations from both Skokie 73 and a half, Kennelworth, Glen Allen 41 and Skokie Park District. And the one common theme I noticed and Cindy noticed as well among all of them was that they they really seem to have your best interest at heart. And you never felt like they were like they were always, they were always advocating for you and they were always on top of everything. And if it was in the interview, and you guys probably noticed this as well, it just it felt like they would become part of our team. It wasn't a separate entity. It was someone that was felt like they were going to become part of our team as well. And I think that gave us a lot of comfort, especially not having been through this process before. I know I touched on this too. They haven't worked with Archon before, but Jeff Hawk with Archon had worked with them at a previous firm. So he's very familiar with the owner and just spoke volumes or spoke wonders about their owner who has stated he's going to be very involved. And we didn't feel like we would get that at some of the other bigger firms that we were talking to. Here, we felt that the owner was very much invested in our project, not just because it's a project, because it's our project.
Okay, any questions? Okay, did we did get motion and second, didn't we? Yes, okay, in that case, could the secretary call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Gugliano?
Yes.
And Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Excellent. Then our next item is can I have a motion and a second to approve. Accepting the FY21 audited financial statements.
So moved.
Is there any discussion on this? Do we actually have the audit? Is there any discussion on this? Do we actually have the audit?
Yeah, we did. Couple of points. The audit was delayed a little this year because most districts that received way more federal funding than they're used to because of all the S R funds that were released this past year had to undergo additional, additional step in the audit process. So that delayed everything, pushed everything back. But we have received the audited financial statements that were in your board packet. I have a booklet for everyone if you'd, if you'd like. And there were again, and we talked about this, the finance committee and Jim Henry presented. There were no findings this year. Everything was in working order. And you know, a big thanks to every year, big thanks to our office staff for compiling everything. Jude Delashud is a fantastic job, is so organized and makes it very simple for them. This year was happened to be, I was out the entire week because my daughter was born. So thank you to everyone that picked up the slack in my absence. I did note to the auditor that I did call him from the hospital room to make sure everything was going okay. I asked if they got us some kind of discount. He said no, so that whatever, but I, but.
Hey, you've gone to the tax deduction system.
Right, right. But we've gotten to a stage in the process where they are very familiar with the reports that we have. And the fact that, again, it's another year with no concern, just speak, speaks volumes to how we operate things in the business department, but because we're small, it takes everyone here to be involved in that. So the school office, the district office is a fantastic job and our processes, the processes that we have in place, this just reiterates that they're functioning right now. So that's good. So thank you.
Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Jeff regarding the audit statements? Okay. In that case, for the sec, oh, do we get a motion and second?
Yes.
We did. Can the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Perfect. The statements are accepted. Okay, I think we're on to the last one. So can I have a motion and second to adopt the tentative twenty twenty-two tax levy? Motion.
Sorry, can? I'm sorry, Jackie.
Okay.
This is assuming what everyone is here for. This is the first, this is the first year of my time here that no one has left before this, it's seeming. Well, thank you. The tax levy, and I say this upfront to any board member, any community member here, please reach out to me if you'd ever like to sit down and go through this in more detail. It is the most complicated thing we do as business officials is the tax levy. Cook County makes it more difficult, but it is a very difficult process. So in advance, please reach out to me. I'm going to fly through some of these pretty quickly tonight. But please reach out to me if you ever have any questions. Everything that, the levy is our request for money every year from the community for property tax dollars. There are limitations that I'll get to in a minute, but this is our budget summary for this year. This is what dictates what we request every year. As you can see, seventy-four percent of our revenue on a yearly basis is from local property taxes, and this year is lower than usual because of the large amount of federal money that we're getting and a large increase in C P P R T money that we're getting. Tax levy versus tax extension, you'll hear the two terms used frequently together. Tax levy is what the district requests. The tax extension is what's actually received after the county goes through the evaluation and assessment process. Everything that people sometimes get confused because they think that the school district is the one that dictates how much money is on their taxes, when in actuality, it's how much your property is valued for. Assess valuation, there's a taxable value placed on your property that is then equalized and there's a multiplier applied. And what that does is in Cook County, they're trying to bring market value up to about one-third of what the assessed value should be. Residential real estate in the area is assessed at about ten percent or is equalized, assessed at ten percent, and then commercial and industrial properties is set to twenty-five percent. What that means is that districts with large industrial and commercial property have a higher E A V, which makes it easier on their homeowners. Our E A V is substantial due to the large commercial industrial tax base that we do have. The property tax extension limitation law, and you've heard Elizabeth Hennessy tonight refer to this as well when referring to the debt service extension base, was a law put in place in nineteen ninety-four. What it did was it limited how much school districts could ask for in the levy process. The lesser of five percent or the C P I as of December thirty-first, the previous year. December thirty-first last year, the C P I was at one point four percent. So there's a, there's a calculation built in that allows for us to access some new property that came on this past year. But that one point four percent, we're always about, we're trending about one to two percent above what that actually is with new property. So one point four percent really limits us as far as how much that we can access with revenue every year. C P I, if you're, if anyone's tracking it this year though, is about four point five to five percent right now, which is the highest it's been in a long time. These are some other terms you'll see. Collection is the receipt that when the district actually gets them, or this county treasurer gets the money. Distribution is when that money is then funneled out to the township treasurer's office here and placed in the school funds. Tax increment financing district is not something that we currently have in place, but that's a tool used to to help blemish or help areas and generate economic development. And there's the loss and cost. Loss and cost is three percent. The county adds three percent addition to the levy because of factoring in not collecting all property taxes. This is a look at the calendar for the year. So we have our budget estimates, March through June. August was a little later. We usually get the tax rate report in June or July. This year we got it in August. There was a lot to the assessment process, process this year, especially with the pandemic. We then prep, prep the levy, finance committee meeting, levy presentation to the board and the public hearing to adopt. And then a levy is delivered to the county clerk in December. Typically, that has happened because we don't go over, there's a five percent cap. If we go over five percent, then we have to have a public hearing. In the, in the spirit of transparency, we've always had a public hearing regardless, whether we go over the five percent or not. So we'll present it November. We always present a tentative in November and then approved and had a public hearing in December. The tax levy timeline there is, there's a measurement period and then we have a tentative levy and then the tax levy is approved. But this is where it gets a little convoluted because C P I December twenty, and then we're talking right now about the levy two thousand twenty-one for the school year twenty-two, but then we get money in twenty-two and twenty-three. So we're talking about four different years at the same time. There's a breakdown of our E A V as a district. You'll see that large piece for commercial and a large piece for industrial and then the residential there. And that, that helps us, that helps our homeowners out. That's a look at Niles Township as a whole. We currently have the second lowest tax rate in the township by far. And a Culver seventy-one there is about one point seven nine. It's very low, but you'll see is the residential column there. It's tied directly to the percentage of residential property in the district. These are some calculations. So you'll have a property that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That because it's a residential property is brought down to ten percent for an assessed value of thirty-five percent. Then the county, which changes a multiplier every year, again, they're trying to get everything to about one-third of market rate. It brings it back up to the equalized assessed value. And you'll see then your tax bill every year is that that will be the number that's actually taxed. There's a look at total equalized assessed valuation in the district over the course of last ten years. We had a, we were getting down to historic lows in two thousand fifteen. I mean, we had dropped down to about three hundred and seventy, three hundred and seventy million. At one point prior to two thousand eleven, we were about six hundred and twenty, six hundred and thirty million. And we're getting back up to those levels now. And these assumptions here, I'm assuming a pretty stable E A V because we've seen so much increase over the last few years. It's hard to tell whether that's going to continue. These are levy calculations and how we get to the point of giving a tax rate. So we take that prior year, how much we actually got the prior year times one plus the C P I, which gives us our maximum. Then there's a, there's a factor in there for new property. So we have our E A V. But then you back out the new property and it gives you a little, a little bit of a larger amount to actually access that new property in the first year. There's a look at our extension over time. And then our tax rate over time. And you'll see back in two thousand thirteen, we're up about two point five five at the time. That is the last time the district was paying off a debt. Those numbers presented by Liz Hennessy tonight, this, these numbers you're seeing here do not include those numbers. But given the tax rate that we're at now, plus the numbers that she had, would put us around two point two, two point two five, which is still well below our high. And again, the third, we're the second lowest in the township. The third lowest is about two point seven right now. And there's the relationship that I talk about between E A V extension and tax rate. You'll see that extension is pretty, is in a pretty narrow band. But then that E A V goes down, the tax rate goes up. And that's the relationship that we're talking about. So really what we're going to see every year is the E A V in our district to go up. The more, that's why you want new businesses in your area. That's you want, that's why you want these things to be, to going. There are the variables we're looking at for this year. Again, one point four percent down from two point three last year. Existing property, in fact, are in a negative five percent decrease, again largely tied to the unknown. We're having our triennial reassessment in two thousand twenty-two. That's generally when we see a lot of changes in our E A V, E A V is every third year. There's two different, two different projections I'm showing in the, in the board packet. One was an extension projection, which I tried to be as accurate as possible. Levy is to protect the district in case of a bundle of new property coming in. So extension projection is a ten million, the levy projection is the twenty-five. We've had a ten-year average of new property of about four point one, but that four point nine nine percent levy that we traditionally do, and again, that's something that's been on board since before I came on in two thousand and eleven, is that four point nine nine percent increase when the levy request every year, simply because that protects the district in case there is an influx of new property. Do we expect to get that? No, we've never come even close to that number. But we do that just to protect in case there is an influx of new property. The most new property in the last ten years that we've, we've had is twelve point four million, which was last year. Again, the key to understanding this is that so much of this is out of our control right now. We're just doing what we can to project with unknown variables. We'll find this out between June and August next year what that actually is. We levy every year for these specific funds, again tied to the budget that we do. The non-capped is the debt service. That's something that's going to be tied to if the, if it's approved in December, what the ten million dollars in debt, debt service that will come off, that's not going to be reflected tonight when we actually file with the county. They will actually add that on there in March. There's what we're proposing tonight. Again, the first column is the twenty twenty extension, what we actually received. The second column is the levy. That's actually what's going to be on the levy document that we submit to the county. And then that projected extension is a column I use kind just to say here, this is what we, is a more realistic idea of what could happen. Again, that debt service component not being included here. And that'll be in the bond and interest line. You'll see there under the tax rate. That's where that will be. A huge component, again, that's the downside of having a lot of commercial property here is that we do have a property tax appeals process that we've always been hit pretty hard with these. The first part is the border review where people can file an appeal and it changes their E A V, but the money doesn't come off the district books. The appeal board of the circuit court, that's when intervention in those, in those cases actually reflects a negative money to the district. That's a huge reason that we're, why we're part of the property tax appeals cooperative with other Niles Township districts to share the cost of those services, those legal services. It's always fared well for us over the course of the last ten years. We've, I believe it's us in District sixty-eight have benefited the most is when talking about total dollars saved as a result of being part of this cooperative. The final slide is a levy recommendation is the four point nine nine percent. Truth and taxation threshold, again, we've just talked about that, that we hold a public hearing regardless of whether or not we're over that just for transparency sake. New property remains small as a percentage of total E A V. C P, C P I is trending very high for next year. Again, that is, it's, it's never been above three point one, three point two over the last ten years. There's a point it was four point one, I think in two thousand eight. But this is a huge number that's going to drive revenues up. An important reminder that districts requesting money is not the driver of higher taxes. I can't reiterate that enough. We are very limited by P T L what we can request. Every year with the allocation of levy, we mix it up between funds. It's basically to bring the funds in balance with both what we budgeted as well, as well as what we have in the fund balance currently. And there's also levy and tax bill calculations I've met available on the Fairview website. So that was a very, very quick overview of a complicated process, but please let me know if you have any questions.
I was just going to ask about the new property. It's like a lot of this new warehousing, that that's the new property that we're seeing?
Yeah. Yep. And things that are repurposed too. So things that have been closed that have just are being reopened. They also, they do a lot of those estimates also based on general income potentially generated from those properties. So it's C P P R T is a huge, it's not part of this, but C P P R T is a huge component of our commercial tax base as well because that has gone significantly up and that's to replace dollars that were lost twenty-something years ago when they used to tax personal property businesses.
But am I right in thinking that there's some kind of delay between a building going up?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there some kind of delay between a building actually going up and actually us collecting taxes on it?
Yeah, it's about a year and a half, two-year delay.
Okay.
Yeah, again, it goes back to that staggering of the years. We're talking about C P I from twenty twenty, twenty-one tax levy, twenty-two budget, we get the money in twenty-two and twenty-three. Like when a property comes on the books, it's not going to be assessed till next year, but then it's new property and that next year. So you're actually not going to get the tax money from that till following year.
So we should be collecting on FedEx, but not quite on Amazon. There's a new FedEx building and the Amazon building. Yeah.
And same with the tax appeals too. I mean, we, we were paying back, we'll get a tax appeal from two thousand ten, eleven, they were having paid negative amounts for just because it dragged on in the courts.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Basically, we're adopting the tentative levy in advance of it going to a full vote on it in December after we've had the public hearing. So any other questions?
I had a question. Um, I heard one way, then I heard the other. Is this taken into account the bonds?
It does not. No, no. What happens is that once the resolution is approved by the board, that will be submitted to the county. The county will then add that to, add that on in March. So we get the tax rate report, which that's when if they tell us, hey, this is what your E A V was that you guessed about last year, and this is what these, these numbers are that you guessed on. They'll include that in there.
Okay, any files, no other questions? Could secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Fair. As always, a very clear explanation. And you know, I, I don't tire of hearing it every year actually, because I think it just refreshes my mind every year and it's wonderful. Thank you very much. So are there any other items for future consideration? No, I was just going to mention that I will be going to the ISP conference this weekend and Jackie will be coming along to accomplish, and I believe so I've gone to hopefully, yeah. So we'll report back that next month and see what wonderful things we found out. Anything else? In that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting this evening at nine ten? So moved. Our second, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosie?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir?
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your presentations and your contributions.